Good evening, everyone. Just going to call the meeting to order. Thank you all for coming. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press, the Board Office, the schools, and on Cablevision Channel 118, and Verizon Files, Channel 24, and by filing such notice with the Township Clerk. This meeting was scheduled for Tuesday, June 22, 2021. The Board will take formal action on payment of bills and other agenda items. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Callie. The Old Bridge Township, I'm sorry, Mr. Carroll. The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of the state establishes that members of the public, including members of the Board, have the right to record public Board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public Board meeting. Therefore, the Board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual, and in no manner represents the official record of this Board. The Board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording, and completely disavows any future use.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, please.
Ms. Burns?
Here.
Ms. Callie?
Here.
Mr. De Prima?
Here.
Mr. Dunn?
Here.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Here.
Mr. Giordano?
Here.
Mr. Solakowski?
Here.
Mr. Weber? Mr. Carroll?
Here.
Quorum exists?
Okay, can we all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, so, again, welcome, everyone. And so tonight we'll just be going over the agenda to see if there's any questions, concerns for next week. So we will have a moment of silence next, silence next week. Code of Ethics Corner. We need a volunteer?
Burns will volunteer.
Thank you. Okay. And there'll be an approval, the approval of the minutes. Hopefully, everybody will have a chance to review. Will we have a report from the student representative? Do we know? Do we know who that is?
They have a... I'm confident that they had the election, but the representative has not contacted my office yet to state that when they'd be start appearing.
Okay. So we shall see. TBD. And we will have some recognition. And there's an action.
So we do have recognition tonight?
Yes. All right, so I need a motion to move recognition... No, sorry.
Thank you. We wanted to take the opportunity to recognize our students this Tuesday from the middle schools, who are members or inducted this year into the Junior National Honor Society from both Jonas Salk Middle School and Carl Sandberg Middle School. An invitation went out to these recipients. We understand that as summer recess begins, many of them are not available. But if you are here tonight, we'd certainly like to recognize you. So as I state, read your name from the list. I'll go school by school. Please stand and remain standing until I complete the list, and we'll all give you the ovation you deserve. Move the Board to commend the following Jonas Salk Middle School students for their induction into the Junior National Honor Society. And for those of you who are not aware, not only does the Junior National Honor Society follow the tenants of the National Honor Society, its parent organization, but it also follows through with looking for students who are looking for service, leadership, and academics as well. This year's inductees are: Jairis Adamos, Ryan Arbiny, Ohr Aviv, Tiran Balaji, Sean Barnett, Madison Cancela, Shutrika Dahul, Hope Davis, Maive Galik, Justin Good, Jaleh Guzman, Haley Hugh, Leah Inzana, Carolina Jankuzic, Audrey Kim, Jada Kimiak, Olivia Lee, Sasha Mirzon, Isabella Nazario, Mahi Patel, Alyssa Penn, Michael Schalbert, Jake Tenabrusko, Rativka Tutuka, Alexis Vaquero, Megan Valenzola, and Sarah Wallace. If any of those students are here, congratulations, a round of applause, a thanks from everyone. The recognition of the National Honor Society. At their ceremonies at their schools, I believe, they were given their certificate in recognition of their induction into National Honor Society. Move the Board to commend the following Sandberg School students for their induction into the Junior National Honor Society. Ayin Adan, Braden Appleton, Hyatt Aidin, Kayla Barbado, Taylor Bentley, Alyssa Blahoda, Daniela Brooskova, Francesca Campisi, Tishva Shan Dupatla, Pratam Chawala, Nasrat Chowdhury, Ryan Kohn, Yaseen Diab, Kyle DiMarco, John Femiano, Nicole Fitova, Jason Gelman, Julia Gelman, Aaron Hernandez, Ryan Amikmir, Perita Katari, Emily Lennon, Anthony Limiero, Dylan Malik, Sean Mangan, Gabriella Martins, Julia Matara, Cameron Matsko, Gabriella Rose, Isabella Newsom, Mitya Nigam, Catherine O'Leary, Marina Punjabi, Kia Parik, Aria Patel, Isha Patel, Kushii Patel, Akil Pankala, Aaron Peralata, Anthony Pazuli, Semika Pakarani, Sharana Raj, Ratipa Rajish, Cole Reed, Alina Rivera, Servaya Senkisa, Nima Satis, Mischa Said, Maik Shah, Sophia Sawlacha, Matthew Walsh, Carter Blake Wiley, and Caitlin Roome. A round of applause for all of those standing for Carl Sandberg Middle School, Junior National Honor Society. And I'm sure you're, the round of applause for people watching at home is tremendous as well. Well deserved, and thank you for all of you have done to put that positive academic light on our school district. Congratulations, and enjoy your summer recess. I'm sure you're all going to be working hard, anyway.
Congratulations, everyone. Now I need a motion to accept the recognition items number one and two.
Giordano motion?
Okay, Mr. Giordano, can I have a second?
Callie will second.
Mrs. Callie, okay. Any discussion? Would anyone like to comment? I would just like to say, congratulations to all of you. All of you, you've worked so, clearly worked so incredibly hard, and, and we're all very proud of you. Congratulations again to all of you, and thank you for coming out tonight to be recognized. Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Ms. Ellis Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one and two pass.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or discussion on the rest of the items, three through six? Is it three through, yeah, three through, anybody have any other? No? Okay. Will we have a superintendent's report next week, or do you have one tonight, Mr. Cecilio?
There'll be a superintendent's report next week. We also have to do the twice-yearly violence vandalism report as well.
Got it. Thank you. Any correspondence?
No correspondence.
Thank you. Will we have any special committee reports? I'm trying to remember if we had any meetings. I don't remember. No? Okay. So there will be no special committee reports? Okay, so now we move to the hearing of the residents on agenda items only. So agenda items only, if anybody has any comments. Seeing none, I will close that portion of the meeting. And we will move on. Okay, so, policy. We are to discuss that tonight? Mr. Parton?
Yes, Mrs. Burns, we're going to do that now, right?
Yes, I was going to ask as well, does that mean we have to have a committee report for this, if it's done here and now?
No, if we have a brief discussion of what is in this policy alert, that is sufficient to put you ready for a first reading for next week.
Okay.
So the policies in Strauss Estime Alert Number 223, which came out in May, are almost entirely either policies that are being removed, or policies that are being revised or adopted based upon state regulatory mandate. The ones that have any sort of option in them involve, or include the first one, your Bylaw 0131, which is just being updated to reflect regulatory language. That is the theme through most of these. The Educational Improvement Plan, which is 1521, is only, only pertains to special needs receiving districts, so that is not an Old Bridge policy. It is being removed anyway, but that will have no effect on your school district. The COVID-19 Response Act is being rescinded. The policy is being abolished based upon the fact that the FFCRA has been, has expired. Career and technical education is being consolidated. Your policy is being somewhat expanded. In that case, Old Bridge is one of the few districts that needs this because you do offer career and technical education in-house, whereas many districts that offer that at the county level will abolish this policy. The regulation is being abolished simply because the policy is being expanded, so it's just they're shifting the language, which is largely unchanged, except for some language and definitions from the state regulations are being integrated into the policy as revised. The next eight policies, which is the assignment of extra duties and the non-renewal and evaluation policies, are being updated to reflect, again, regulatory language. The assignment of extra duties and non-renewal is also governed by your existing collective bargaining agreements. So again, this will have no impact in Old Bridge, except to use more, hopefully, recycled paper, because this is really changes without a significant difference for you. The, moving down then to, you'll see, Policy and Regulation 5460.02. We had that discussion on one of your earlier Zoom meetings in the first half of the pandemic. The Bridge Year Pilot Program was adopted in the spring to assist students, and primarily student athletes, who lost a year based upon the complete shutdown in spring of the previous school year, the 1920 school year. That is a pilot program that is likely to expire. At this point, it is being integrated. At this point, it is being integrated into your policy manual, so that the state language is specifically cited there. School District Travel and Procurement Procedures for new, school nutrition programs are both mandated policies. Again, they are both being updated to reflect state and federal regulations respectively. And other than that, I will speak to Mr. Mayor's office between now and when the final packet comes out this Friday for your first reading next week, to fill in blanks such as the designation of staff members, which will maintain the same designations as you currently have. There are not any significant language options in any of these, so this explains why we did not have a separate policy committee meeting for this purpose. Most of this is just language you are required to adopt, or policies you are abolishing. Unless board members have any questions at all?
Any questions?
Oh, do you want to ask?
No, go ahead.
So, is there a way that, is this going to be put on the website for the public to see before the next, before the first reading?
Yes? Oh, okay.
And then my, is there a way for the public to submit questions during that time, or will they have to come to the next meeting?
Well, the public still has the option to send emails to the Board Secretary email address by 12 o'clock of the day of the board meeting, and I will read those questions to the board, or they could come to the board meeting and ask questions about the policies.
Sounds good, thank you.
Can they also email Mr. Sodino, you know, if they have a specific question?
They can email myself or Mr. Mayor specifically with a question of policy, it doesn't have to come out of meeting, just.
Correct, yeah, yeah. So if anyone has any questions, if they, when they read it on the, you know, on the website, if they have a specific question, they can email Mr. Sodino directly.
Now I have another question. Since we're doing this a little bit differently, it seems that there is a question in the audience, will they have to wait for comments on the agenda, or can they ask their question now?
Ordinarily, that would have been during comments on agenda items, but that can certainly be asked during your regular public portion at the end of the meeting.
So we're going to wait for the public portion at the end for questions on the policies?
Probably best to stick to the agenda for that.
Okay, so seeing nobody else has any other questions on the policy, no other board members, we're going to move on to curriculum, and it's, anybody have any questions on curriculum, once they're right? Okay, and we have athletics. Any questions, any concerns? And we have finance, so we do have an action item on finance, so I need a motion to move Finance Number One.
Callie will move.
Mrs. Callie, can I have a second, please?
Dunn will second.
Mr. Dunn, any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Alice Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay. Does anybody have any other questions or discussion about anything else under Finance?
Joe, I do, please.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, on number 16, it says SAIF in parentheses on every line, I don't know what that stands for.
That is the acronym for the insurance fund that the district belongs to.
Oh, okay.
It's the insurance, it's the insurance underwriter.
Okay, and also on the second one, in the first paragraph, I guess, equipment breakdown, boiler and machinery. Does that mean we're covered if something breaks?
Which line item are you referring to?
Right under 16, it's SAIF multi-peril package policy, the second line in, equipment breakdown slash boiler and machinery.
The reference there is, is if there's a, an accident that relates to that type of equipment.
Okay.
Not the repair of the equipment. We're required to keep all equipment operating efficiently and, and monitored on a regular basis each year, and we're inspected, but this is in case, in case of the unfortunate accident, we have the coverage.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Anyone else?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Resolutions eight, nine, and 10, where the funds from the general account are being moved to these reserves, what will the funds be used for?
So those resolutions are, as they're stated, they're authorizing the movement to capital reserve, emergency reserve, and maintenance reserve up to those amounts. That doesn't necessarily mean those would be, that will be the amounts that will be moved up to those funds, it's up to those funds. Once the, the audit is finished, and a determination is made by the auditors as to how much money has not been spent or is available for those transfers, we would make those transfers, and the board would be advised of what those transfers were. The question as to what the funds would be used for, the capital reserve funds are used for projects, capital projects that are included in the long-range facility plan of the district, which was developed 10 years ago and is modified as needed on an annual basis. Maintenance reserve is for maintenance projects that we do each year, and emergency reserve is specifically for coverage of healthcare costs that exceed a calculation made by the state, and also for security. And generally, over the last few years, we have used emergency reserve for security costs.
Yep, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, so moving on to, where am I? Non-certificated personnel office. Anybody have any questions, concerns regarding one through eight? No? Okay, non-certificated personnel operational, anything? We do have an action, sorry, didn't see that. So we do have an action item on number one, so I just need a motion to move non-certificated personnel op, uh, operational, item number one.
Then we'll move non-certificated personnel operational item number one, Madam President.
Thank you, Mr. Dunn, can I have a second?
Burns will second.
Mrs. Burns, thank you. Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Alice Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay. Two, two through five, anybody have any questions, discussion? Okay, non-certificated personnel other? That goes to number 12. Okay. Certified personnel, anything? We do have an action item, yep. Okay, I need a motion to move one, two, and three, under certificated personnel. I'll move it. Thank you, Ms. Alice Foster, can I have a second?
Uh, Giordano, second.
Thank you, Mr. Giordano, any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Mayor?
Ms. Callie?
I am abstaining on item 2A, otherwise, yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Alice Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three pass.
Excellent. Any other questions or concerns? Through number 48? All the way for everybody to flip through. Okay, moving on to non-certificated personnel transportation. One and two, anybody? No? All righty, supplies, equipment, and services. So we have an action item, they are one, two, and three. I'm going to need a motion.
Callie will move.
Mrs. Callie, can I have a second?
Dunn will second.
Mr. Dunn, any discussion? Supplies, equipment, and services, one, two, and three. Nope. Mr. Mayor, roll call.
Mr. Dunn?
Yes.
Alice Foster?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mr. Solakowski?
Yes.
Mr. Weber?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Callie?
Yes.
Mr. De Prima?
Yes.
Mr. Carroll?
Yes.
Resolutions one, two, and three pass.
All right. Any questions or concerns about the rest? We have four through, four through 17. Okay, on to transportation. Any questions, any discussion? Last items, just one through four? All right, miscellaneous. Miscellaneous, we have one through 11.
We're anticipating an addition on either miscellaneous or Board Secretary and Board Business on a, a property transaction for next week, but we'll be discussing that in executive session.
Okay. Okay, very good. All right, moving on to Board Secretary and Board Business. Any questions, concerns, clarifications? Seeing none, we will move on to the Hearing of the Residents on any school district And I know there was someone that had a question on policy, if they wanted, did you want to ask that? You can come up, you can come up to the, yeah, just come on up, identify yourself, just tell us your name.
Hello, my name is Ella Morales, I have a son that's entering the ninth grade in September.
Okay.
Yeah, I just had a question, a quick question on policy 1649, I just wanted to know what, what it entailed, so that I understand what has been abolished.
1649.
Just so I'm clear on what was exactly abolished.
Primarily, what's being abolished is leave entitlements for staff members, that was specifically funded through the Families First Coronavirus Relief Act, and that expired on December 31st, 2020.
Thank you.
There's also a copy of the policies available, is that correct, for the public to view?
The policies will be posted on the website on Fri, on Friday or Monday this week.
Correct, but don't we have one here in the binder?
Oh, yes, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yes, there are, there are copies of the policies in the white binder.
They're also available, you didn't mean the current policies, since this one's being abolished? All current policies are under the Board tab on the district website.
Correct.
Okay, so you can, you can take a look at that. Okay. All right. Seeing no other comments, no other resident would like to have anything to say, I am going to close the, that portion of the meeting, I'm going to close the Hearing of the Residents. So we're going to move on to old business. Do we have any old business that we need to discuss? Mr. Giordano?
It's from last month, the students and the teachers, for Teachers of the Year, I would want to congratulate them and thank them for what they do. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else with old business? Okay, how about new business? Any new business?
Actually.
Yes?
Yeah, I just want to give a shout out, you know, our, our local athletic teams did fabulous this year, our volleyball, and our girls lacrosse, baseball, I, I don't want to mention them all, because I'll miss somebody, but I do want to give just an acknowledgement that this Friday, one of our coaches and a former alumni is in the final trials for the Olympics for the steeplechase, Travis Mahoney, so wishing him good luck as he races on Friday representing Old Bridge.
Excuse me, Kelly, so if he does well, he's in the Olympics?
Yes.
Wow.
He qualified the other day, I don't have ever seen steeplechase, it is a crazy, exhausting race that, I, I just happened to see his time, which was his personal best, was like eight minutes and, and some odd seconds. I mean, I, I have trouble walking for eight minutes, and these are jumping over hurdles and obstacles, and it's, you know, just physically enduring, so, and, and he is one of our track and field coaches, so we're fortunate to have him here, and again, is an alumni too, so it is going to be, I, I, I'm pretty sure it's going to be seven o'clock on Friday is the, is the actual meet, pretty sure. I'll try to find out.
That is amazing, just, we've always had such a wonderful track team, and he, I just remember him, you know, from being in school, and he was just so great, so that's awesome. Look forward to seeing that. Anyone else?
I just, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Father's Day, I know that it passed, but we actually celebrated ours today, because my husband was working, so, you know, if you are a father or a father figure, thank you for all that you do. I also wanted to just reiterate the importance of, you know, we didn't exactly get a lot of direction from the government for our mask mandates, but we are capable of reading the research on our own, and if, you know, we need to come to the conclusion that if they're not going to give us the guidance, if things change, that we are capable of looking and reading things on our own, so, and I'd also like to end with a Happy Pride Month to those that celebrate, and that we value you as individuals and members of our community, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Burns. Does anyone else have anything to say, either new business or good of the order, anything?
Yes.
Mr. Giordano?
I would also like to congratulate the class of 21, they've been through a lot, especially during their senior year, they had a lot of things taken away, same with the class of 2020, so balance back strong and do the best you can, and just have a successful life going forward. Congratulations.
Thank you. Is anybody else? For the good of the order, anything? Yes, I will reiterate what both Mrs. Burns and Mr. Giordano said, specifically, congratulations to our class of 2021, and yes, it's, it was a very trying year, very proud of all of them for enduring and, and making it through, and congratulations to all of them. So with that, I will make, need a motion to adjourn, and, oh, executive session.
Yes, you, you have some executive session items, we need the motion for executive session for negotiations, personnel, and attorney-client privilege.
Okay.
With the clarification that the board will not be back out, the board will adjourn from there, there will be no further public portion.
Yes, okay, so I need a motion to go into executive session.
Callie will move.
Ms. Callie? Mr. Weber, second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Opposed? Mr. De Prima, opposed? We're going into executive session at 8:04.
Okay, thank you all for coming out, and we will hopefully see you all next week. We will not be back.